January 21st, 2014, at this time. Is Cora Aguilar in the audience? I didn't see her. I don't see Cora. With that, if you'd all please stand. Councilman Chappados is going to read an invocation as well as then I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening by your heads if you will please. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. That. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll move to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Cora?
Here.
Councilmember Chappados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pharoah?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great, thank you. At this time, we have a proclamation, or actually it's an award. It's part of our Welcome Home for Specialist Chance Ramsey. So, for Councilman Potter, you join me down there to begin with, and we'll lead the presentation from there.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, I'd like to introduce Specialist Chance Ramsey for Operation Welcome Home. He's an Arizona native who was born in Cholo, Arizona, and moved to Maricopa in 2009. Chance graduated from Maricopa High School in 2011 and enlisted in the U.S. Army in September of the same year. Specialist Ramsey completed basic training at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and was assigned to Fort Meade, Maryland, where he volunteered for early deployment to Afghanistan. Just three days ago, Specialist Ramsey returned safely to Maricopa to be with his mom, Lynn Hawkins, before he returns to Maryland a few weeks to await his next assignment. When asked why Chance wanted to join the Army, Mrs. Hawkins said he was always wanting to serve his country, and his mother then added that when he told her he was joining the Army, she was both supportive and worried sick at the same time. Chance's mom finally added that he's a great, great kid. In conclusion, Specialist Chance Ramsey, welcome home.
We have a special plaque for him that says, "A certificate that we'd like to give to those that we honor." It says, "Be it here by the city council, the city of Maricopa, as part of the city of Maricopa's Operation Welcome Home, is proud to recognize Specialist Chance Ramsey on the 21st day of January 2014 for his service to his country, in the United States Army, and for his safe return to Maricopa from overseas deployment." Let's welcome him. Congratulations. Happy to have you here. At this time, we don't have any other proclamations or awards, so we'll move into the report from the mayor. Welcome back to the new year. It seems like we're already burning through January, and where is the time going? I know that it seems like it's been a long time since we've had a council meeting, but the reality is we've been very, very, very busy. As you can see, we rearranged the council chambers a little bit to make them more accessible and more usable, and we've been doing a lot of different things, and I wanted to kind of give you some of the ideas of stuff that we've been up to. First of all, I had the opportunity to attend the ADOT meeting, at which point we were diligently trying to attain information and funding for our overpass. I had the opportunity to attend the MLK celebration last night that was held at Seven Java Street Coffee. It was a wonderful event, lots of people. We also had the opportunity to have an Intel event, in which we invited the four or 500 employees from Intel that are here to couple with the wonderful community service aspect that they provide, and invited them out to get them involved through the event for lots of different presentations and lots of different people that presented. We had the opportunity to see who and whom would enjoy being a representative of Maricopa for a variety of different service organizations. Right off the bat, we had four people offer and qualify to be substitute teachers, and they signed up and volunteered, and so it was a wonderful event. We also had the opportunity to attend a Penal County air quality meeting. As you know, that's been a big issue for the monitor that we have, and so I had the opportunity to sit down with four other mayors, Mayor Meck out of Buckeye, Mayor Stanton of Phoenix, and Mayor Smith of Mesa, and ourselves, and we were able to meet with the EPA Administrator Gina McCarthy. This is the very top EPA Administrator, and so it was a great opportunity in which to talk about Maricopa, talk about our issues, and I am proud to say that after that and attending the Penal County Board of Supervisors meetings, we were able to get the lease agreement extended on that monitor and signed, and so that was a very successful opportunity in a series of meetings, so we're happy for that. We also have an internship here at the city of Maricopa that I wanted to let people know about. The city of Maricopa has opened internship positions for high school junior and senior students. The internship provides students with the opportunity to experience how public organizations operate on a day-to-day basis. To apply, please submit your application through the city website at www.mericopa-az.gov. And the recruitment will close at 5:00 PM on January 23rd, so that's right around the corner. So, we appreciate your opportunity. It's a great way to learn about city government. Two other things here. I also had the opportunity to attend the Chamber Awards banquet, which one of our very own, Brenda Campbell, was acknowledged as one of the greatest service people of the year, and so we certainly appreciate that, and by the shade of red she's turning, I think we've done a good job, so let's give her a big round of applause. And last but not least, one of the interesting notes is that the Maricopa Meadows Homeowners' Association recently had their very first disc golf competition, and if you've never played it, you need to go try it out, but we had several people from around the world come to this tournament, some hundred players. They gave away about $10,000 worth of prizes, and just so you know, that actually is en route to becoming one of the tour championship playing venues, and it's being redesigned right now as we speak by the number-one player in the world, and we think that if that happens, it will help bring a significant amount of tourism as well as economic development opportunity to the city of Maricopa in the near future, so just wanted to let you all know that as well. With that, that concludes my report from the mayor, and we'll move on to a report from the city manager. Oh, I apologize. Councilwoman Gussi?
I just wanted to say a couple of words to Specialist Chance Ramsey. I wanted to acknowledge that the Blue Star Moms are here, and also the American Legion Auxiliary are here. Thank you very much. You put a very good welcome-home event this last weekend. Thank you for doing that. It's very important, and I know this means a lot to you, but it means more to this community to welcome you home than it does, I think, to you and your family, but thank you again. I just want to give you one last thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gussi.
Mayor, I'd like to invite Jennifer Campbell, our Community Services Director. She has a couple of announcements.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just making sure this works, since the other one seemed to disappear. Well, the mayor kind of stole my thunder a little bit on the first item that I had.
My apologies.
That's okay. I do want Ms. Brenda Campbell to please stand up. Come on, Brenda. She hates when I do this. But yes, Brenda Campbell did receive the Civil Servant of the Year Award from the Maricopa Chamber of Commerce. Not only is Brenda a wonderful supporter of, obviously, the city, being the management analyst for the Community Services Department, but she's also involved in numerous clubs and organizations such as the Historical Society, Friends of the Library, Chamber, and Relay for Life, so I just want to recognize that not only is Brenda a very committed employee, but she's a committed citizen, and I'd really like to give her a hand because that does mean a lot, so thank you, Brenda. Next up, I'd like Travis Carlin to please stand. Travis is one of our newer employees. He came to us on October 28th of last year. However, I definitely think he's going to be sorely missed in Minnesota where he was because Travis just won, last week or so, the Presidential Award, and this was given by the Minnesota Parks and Recreation Association. He received the award because of his outstanding work as the co-chair of the 2013 State Conference. He was able to bring this conference in. He exceeded budget-revenue expectations and brought it in under expenses, so I am sure Minnesota is sorely missing him, but we are very happy to have him here in Maricopa, so And now I'd like Erica Dilig to please stand. Erica has come to us all the way from Franklin, Wisconsin. Erica is our new Membership Services and Front Desk Coordinator. She's an undergraduate in degree in Health Promotion and Wellness with a minor in Venture Education from the University of Wisconsin. She has a Master's in Recreation Management from the University of Wisconsin. While she was getting her undergraduate and graduate degrees, she worked as the student manager of the Recreation Department on campus. She worked the front desk in the fitness facility. She also worked for the Riverfront Incorporated, which is a nonprofit organization that helps people with disabilities participate in recreation programs such as board games, crafts, and cooking classes, so she comes to us with an extensive recreation background. Some interesting things about Erica, she is very physically fit and enjoys a lot of outdoor activities, and one of the things she actually did was she rode all the way from Maine to Key West on her bicycle by herself. And from what I understand, she only finally got a flat once she hit Florida, so that's pretty good, had to change it herself and kept going, so let me tell you, we've hired a tough cookie in this one, so thank you very much, Erica. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes the city manager report. One thing I forgot to mention in the mayor's report was that we, as the city of Maricopa, sponsor the Tribal Nation Day down at the Capitol. That was held today, and in the process of doing that, we were given, as for our sponsorship, this beautiful painting. I wanted to show it to you. I don't know if you can see that, but this was given to us by the those at the Herd Museum for this, and we'll proudly display it here inside the building, but Delia Carlisle from Akchian Indian Tribal Council brought this over to us earlier today, so we thank her for that. With that, we'll move to the call to the public. At this time, you may approach the podium and speak to the council. We ask you to keep your remarks to two to five minutes, and we'll go ahead and start. Councilman Chappados.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm going to step out of my councilmember role for just a second here. As those of you who have looked at our agenda tonight, we are going to go through the formality very shortly of opening the 2014 campaign season, and this year we'll have three councilmember seats open as well as the seat of the mayor. For those of you who may have run before as a candidate, if you're thinking of running as a candidate, or serving on a campaign committee, or just interested in finding out more about what's involved in running for city council, I wanted to cordially invite you and encourage you to attend a free workshop entitled "Practically Everything You Should Know Before Running for City Council." It's going to be presented by myself and Christian Price, and the event will be Saturday, February 1st, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the Villages of Rancho Aldo Wado Clubhouse. Again, it's free. We're just going to give you a perspective. Between the two of us, we've run for office, we've not been elected, we've been appointed, and we've been elected, so we pretty much have every base covered. So, please, if you want more information, there will be something in the media in the next few days. We'll both have personal information. If you want more information or directions on where to go, just look for our contact information in the media. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anyone else at this time? I'd like to approach the podium and do the call to the public. All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that and move on to the minutes. Can I have an approval, please, for 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have a public hearing. For a reminder, during the public hearing, you may approach the podium and speak to the item, and this item only, but I need to read the initial basis of the public hearing. It's 8.1 PH 14-01. The mayor and city council shall hear public comment for the purpose of considering a Section 5311 Rural Transportation Program grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation to the Arizona Department of Transportation used to continue operations of a demand-response system. Interested persons or agencies shall be heard with respect to social, economic, and environmental aspects of the project. Interested persons may submit oral or written evidence and recommendations with respect to the project. Anyone who would like to address the council on this issue may do so now. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearings at this time. At this time, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda, please?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the regular agenda, we're going to hit item 10.1 first. The mayor and city council shall hear a presentation from Senator Steve Smith regarding 214 legislative session, and I apologize, it's not Senator, it's representative. My apologies. This is for discussion only. Thank you, Representative Smith.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I appreciate, as always, you allowing me a few minutes to be here. What I would like to do, just for those that don't know, each year, certainly before session starts, or, I'm sorry, let me back up. For the record, Steve Smith, House Representative. What I like to do each year is to try to fill in a little bit about what we can expect to see in the upcoming session, and some specific things that I might be working on for our district, so, but again, I certainly appreciate the time here today. I always like to start off, every time I speak, too, I just like to thank God for allowing us to actually do this, to be and to live in a free and safe nation that we can get in front of each other and discuss issues, but I would also like to thank the mayor and councilmember Potter, and Paul Jepson for coming down to the Capitol today. Today was the annual Indian Nations and Tribal Days, so each year we are welcomed all the nations down to the Capitol, and we have a great event to hear from them and their concerns. It was my honor to host Chairman Manuel from the Akchian Tribe, and so, and I'd like to tell the council that I was able to publicly thank him for, my gosh, all the work and the assistance and the partnership that we have with the Akchian, and certainly with the Hila's as well, but just a great day, and so thank you to those that were able to be there. So, now that we got the thank yous out of the way, let me, if I can, let me first tell you some of the things that I'm going to be working on this session. As you all are probably very aware, many times throughout the year, I come to you and everybody to say, "Let me know your ideas. Let me know what might be working or what might not be working in the state of Arizona. Let me try to help fix it." Well, I got to tell you, I guess a lot of people heard me. It seems like, it seems like just about every group or organization or subset in the state has something that they're working on, and I guess I'm going to be the lucky one that's going to try to carry a lot of those bills, and for example, I'll go through these pretty quick, but the reason I'm going to go through these, it'll hopefully give you an idea of what I mean when I say, "Please come to us, you know, we want to do everything that we can to be of assistance." So, we have some contractors, so some of our constituents have come to me and says, "Hey, I'm a contractor," right? "I'm a drywaller," or "I put in flooring," or "I do something," and we find out that a lot of subcontractors are not necessarily playing by the same rules, and they are hiring a bunch of people, but they're not reporting them on their subcontractor payroll. In other words, people like, I'll speak for them, me, the floor layer, the drywaller, we're losing our livelihood. So, for about a year and a half, we've been trying to find a non-legislative way to fix this problem. I'm one of these crazy guys that says, "No, I think we have enough laws. You know, let's try to take some things off the books, and let's try to solve some of our problems non-legislatively." We tried to do that, but it turns out we're going to have to, now we have to do it, but my point is, we're going to really try to help anybody who's in the building or contractor industry. We're going to try to really go after the bad actors and allow those people to have essentially their livelihood back, and I can certainly go in a lot more detail about what I mean by that, but, so that's one subset. We have architects that have come to us with the same type of problem. Believe it or not, there's over 6,000 architects in the state, and they say, "Oh, my gosh, you wouldn't believe what's happening to us," right? So, okay, well, how can we fix that? So, we're doing that. All the way down to custodial interference cases, you know, I have moms and dads that come to me, and they'll say things like, "You wouldn't believe what happens through a divorce, through custody hearings," and the amount of money they've got to pay out, right, and the amount of just time and regulation they've got to go through just to try to figure out what side of the street to pick their kid up when they change on the weekends, so we've got a couple child custody issues that we're certainly working on to try to get those tightened up. Couple other things closer to home. A lot of you might have heard about the groundwater credits, the water issue that we're having here in Penal County. More specifically, it's happening a lot in Casa Grande, but it's going to spill over through all of Penal County, and this is just a case where you have landowners, farmers for the most part, who have grandfathered water rights, okay? And their land sits on very valuable water rights, and we find out that through the veil of night, through some mysterious vote a couple, three years ago, that they're losing those very rights that they thought they had. So, myself and Representative Adam Quasman and Senator Al Melvin, who all represent this district, for the last several months have been working with a lot of the people that were going to try to help correct this, so I just wanted to, again, I can speak about any of these at length, but for the sake of time, rest assured, I have a bill that's going to be introduced tomorrow to correct this essentially stealing of these people's livelihood, which is, of course, is their water, so again, that's a little bit closer to home, but that's going to be a pretty big impact in our county. Agriculture industry is about $1 billion a year in Penal County, so we want to make sure we do everything we can to ensure that that does not get affected in any way. Another thing that we're working on, is that I'm working on, I should say, we have what's called the DD population, the developmentally disabled population, so these are, of course, you know, our children and adults that have a bit more difficulties in life than we do, so we find out, though, that a lot of the DD community can actually, these people can actually hold down jobs, right? They can actually contribute to society, so what I've been working with a few groups is, well, how do we get some of these people to actually integrate into society, right? I mean, just because you're disabled, that doesn't mean you shouldn't, right, you know, be able to help or feel a sense of worth, so. Sat down with a lot of advocacy groups, and it looks like we're going to try to work with what are JTAS, our Joint Technical Education Districts. In other words, they're districts that help teach people a craft or a trade rather than going to college or getting a degree, and I think there's a way that we can get a lot of our disabled community, hopefully, to work for those that want to, and there's a lot, and so again, things like that, I'm just honored to try to take part in. Couple other things, our school board and our superintendent came to me last year about the bus route and the mileage issue that we are experiencing in Maricopa, so for those that don't know, there's a state law that says if another school district is going to travel beyond 20 miles into another district and essentially, right, poach the kids, or pick them up, well, there's some things that you can and can't do when it comes to that, and as we know, the city of Maricopa, a lot of our children are being bused to cities like Tempe and other places that are certainly much farther away than the 20-mile rule. Sat down with Superintendent Chestnut, members of the school board to say, "Well, how do we fix this?" And so, we have a little piece of legislation that we think can stop some, stop some of these districts in their tracks a little bit. There's no recourse that we can't go after, we can't go after them and reclaim any lost money or pupil funding, but the idea is, hey, we have school choice, absolutely. You go to the school that you want to go to, but we also have to abide by the state laws that are in place, especially when it comes to taxpayer-funded buses or whatnot, so again, just another issue that we're working on. Last thing for something that we're trying to do locally when it comes to jobs, right? So, I have a version of a rural jobs bill. Now, a couple of years ago, some of you might remember, we passed out, when I was in the Senate at that time, we passed out what is known as the Jobs Bill in Arizona. Well, what did the Jobs Bill do? Well, it did a lot of good things for businesses. It lowered some of their property taxes, it lowered some of the regulations that they might face, and because of legislation like that, and certainly because of the business owners in the community taking their risk to open up a business, Arizona moved from almost last in the nation in job growth. We're at 48th, and we moved as high as fourth recently. We're now number one in the nation in startup businesses, so if you want to start a business, Arizona's the best place to do it. Forbes Magazine ranked Arizona as having the most opportunity for open jobs this coming year, so we're doing a lot of good things, but a lot of those jobs are in Maricopa and Pima County, which is great, but how about we bring some of those here? So, what I've been drafting for the last year or so is a rural jobs package. How do we offer some of those same incentives, but even more, if we can get people to open up plants and open up manufacturing facilities, and opening up anything in the rural counties? So, rest assured, that's going to be a very important piece of legislation that I think we can hopefully get passed, but certainly, we'll take all the help we can get in supporting it, so when that bill comes up, make your voices loud and clear that you support that, and that hopefully will directly bring jobs into our district and certainly into our communities. Final thing about jobs, the Red Rock Switching Station. So, some of you might know, the Uni-Pacific Railroad is thinking about opening up a switching yard near Red Rock, just south of us here. Now, that's projected to be millions and millions of dollars of gross revenues, as well as potentially hundreds of jobs. We got a little bump, we actually got a little good news the other day, where the state land department and the Uni-Pacific has actually agreed on hiring a consultant, which might not sound like a big deal, but it's been a major big deal to get either one of these sides to move, and we think we're now in a position where, hopefully by the end of the year, if not sooner, we can actually get that agreement in place and try to bring a lot of needed jobs right here in our community with that. So, there's a very, I hope, small encapsulation of maybe some of the specific things that I am working on and running. Now, on a larger scale, I want to talk a little bit for just a minute or so about the governor's budget. Now, the governor just released her budget on Friday. For those of you that don't know the budget process, the governor will release a budget, the legislature will look at it, and then we determine, well, how long are we going to fight, right? So, how close does her budget match maybe what we're thinking in our budget? A couple of things that I wanted to extract from that budget that I thought the city and the council and the community might have of interest is, the first thing is the HERF funding. Now, for those of you that don't know, the HERF funding is basically our gasoline tax, and that goes to help fix a lot of our roads, and it does a lot of things. That funding has been cut, it's been swept, it's been mangled and mutilated for a few years now, all in the guise in the sake of budget correction, and, you know, I got to say, a lot of tough cuts were made in the past, and that was one of them. What was interesting in the governor's budget was there was really no HERF allocation, so what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is reallocate funds so that What was interesting in the governor's budget was there was really no HERF allocation. So what we're trying to, what we're trying to do is reallocate funds to that very program that will triple down to all the cities and towns to help them on some of these transportation problems. And I think Paul Jefferson even extrapolated, it would be about a $314,000, you know, right, benefit to the city of Maricopa, this restoration of these HERF funds. So what the governor is proposing with the HERF funds directly is there's something called like a federal swap, right? And yeah, it kinda sounds maybe a little bit as, I don't wanna say shady, but it sounds a little head-scratcher as you might think. Well, what does that mean? Well, it's kind of like a drawdown program from the federal government to say, well, Maricopa, we wanna fix one of our roads, so we're gonna go to the ADOT, the Arizona Department of Transportation, and put in this file, and then we're gonna hope they're gonna send that to the federal government, and we're gonna hope that we're all gonna get paid and we can do the project. Well, I think the reason she has that scenario in the budget is it's very budget neutral. There's no general fund money coming out going into the HERF fund, if that makes sense. It's kind of this end-around, drawdown, ADOT, federal government. But I just don't know that it's gonna do what we probably are gonna want it to do, which is basically restore funding, let's get money into the cities and towns' hands and let them spend it on the projects that they think are most suitable. So to restore the HERF funding is about $127 million. Certainly, we know that that funds are scarce and that everybody's got a handout in terms of, hey, there's an open checkbook, where's mine? So we wanna try to find a balance, well, how do we actually physically restore that funding so that money can actually get into the hands of the people that can best decide the use for it? So I know myself and leadership and others, we're looking at ways, well, how do we get this into the budget? So rest assured, I want you, I just want you to know, I will personally be working to try to get some of those HERF funding allocations actually into the budget so we don't have to do this end-around federal government game. Let's just try to restore that and actually bring those funds back to our hometowns where they were taken. So that's the first thing. Second thing is K through 12 education spending. The governor has about a $95 million increase in K through 12 spending. And of course, I don't have to tell you the problems, especially in our own city of our K through 12 situation. So funding is very important, but I will continue to reiterate my stance on how I think education should be funded. For the last three years, I've been working on a performance pay bill for teachers and for school districts. And the idea that I've been pushing is, let's put the money at its best use. Well, what's the best use? What's the one element in the education system that helps our kids learn the best? And for me, it's the teacher at the front of the room. You can have all the computers you want and all the whiteboards that you want and all the fancy gyms and all that. It's the teacher at the front of the room that I believe is the most valuable asset in the school and they're gonna be the ones that will most directly help the students learn. So why don't we incentivize those teachers that the better job they do, well, the more money they make? That's kind of the model for, you know, for the real world that we're all in. If you perform very well at your job, you might just get a raise and you might just keep getting bonuses. And the idea is, well, let's put some of that performance money into this teacher fund. The governor in her budget is looking at 2016 to start funding for this very performance pay model. And you might ask, well, what's the model? We don't know. We don't know, cuz it hasn't been released yet. She hasn't released her model. So she hasn't released, well, here's how we're gonna do this, but let's start socking away money for it, is the idea. I've had extensive conversations with our superintendent of public education, John Hupenthal in our state. He's been working on this for 20 years. It's a very tough nut to crack, but the idea is if we can crack it or at least start to crack it, I think it'll help slowly turn around school by school, district by district, and ultimately the state of Arizona. So I'm glad to see that the budget does reflect some of this funding in there, but of course, I'm just here to tell you, we're gonna make sure the best that we can, hey, if there is a performance funding model in place, well, let's make sure it's a good one. Here's what I did when I started on the funding, on the performance project. I said, hey, although I come from a family of teachers, although my wife is a teacher, my brother's a teacher, my sister's a teacher, and I can go down the list, I'm not a teacher. So the first thing I did was ask teachers, hey, if we do a performance model, what do you want it to look like? How would you wanna be graded or scored or evaluated as a teacher doing a good job? I got over 100 pages of emails, 100 pages of emails, thousands of emails from teachers all over the state that said, well, here's what I would do. Well, and guess what? They're all different. So again, there's no one model you can use, so what we wanna try to do is maybe use some of the most popular, the most requested, and again, start plugging those formulas in and see what we can do. So that's education. One more quick thing, and especially of chance and some of our military men and women that are here or that were here, you know, each year we always try to do, you know, more bills and more pieces of legislation if we can to help out our brave men and women in the military. So we did one last year that I was proud to help get passed, which was allowing them to, if you've learned a service in the military and if you've learned it, especially in specific industry, for last year was transportation industry or part of the healthcare industry, well, we don't wanna make you go and re, right, you know, retrain or pay for more testing or whatever it is. So we said, no, if you've learned those services in the military, we think you're probably just oughta just bypass some of that stuff and let's try to just get you working right away. Well, we have another bill this session that's gonna help do that in a few other areas as well. So, and also in the governor's budget, we have a, there's a $5 million appropriation to stop, for military installations in our state, military bases, to stop some potential future encroachment upon the bases. So what we don't wanna see is people trying to buy up too much land or trying to move too close into the military bases. There's a lot of problems that go along with that, and again, I can talk about that at length, but what we've done, we've, at least the governor is, and what I will certainly support, is we've allocated several million dollars to help those installations be free of any potential encroachment, if that makes sense. Last but not least, CPS. So we all know of the horrendous case of 6,500 cases of potential abuse not even being reported on by CPS. The first thing we did last year, matter of fact, the very first bill we passed last year before we even knew there was a problem of this magnitude, was we immediately funded 50, five zero, new caseworkers at CPS and then an additional 150. So last year, we allocated 200 new CPS caseworkers and then the shoe drops on us, oh, there's 6,500 cases that went uninvestigated on. So many of you might have heard, at the governor's State of the State address, she is proposing and did, but maybe can't quite do the executive order that she thought she could. She's proposing to taking CPS out of DES, Department of Economic Security, and making it its own essential standalone agency, which I think has a lot of merit to it and a lot of plus to it, but the example I gave the other day is, well, we just wanna make sure we're not having a runaway rogue agency that isn't gonna do the job that they're called to do. So I guess what I'm saying is, we have a very good director in place, Director Flanagan, who we think will do a very good job in terms of what we've seen from him thus far and some of the CPS study groups that I was able to sit on, sit in on. And so I just, for those of you that haven't heard it, we are certainly addressing the problem. I want you to know, it is probably the most important issue for all of us this session, is to take care of those kids and any kid who might be in the situation that would find themselves on that list of 6,500-plus. So again, rest assured, we are working the best that we can. On a positive note, I did just hear from one of our constituents here that lives in Maricopa, she called me the other day and says, you know what? There was a case filed, the CPS case filed, for her kid two years ago, and she finally just got a call last week. And of course, the terrible news is that she was one of the 6,500 cases, but I guess the good news is, if there's any, they're actually going through all those cases now. The big thing we relay to them is, hey, we're not gonna pull you out, make you an agency, we're not gonna allocate money, and then you go and start working on, no, 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 start working on it right now with the people that we just gave you and try to solve or at least look into and investigate these cases immediately. And in the meantime, we can start seeing what we can do about the agency. So the good news is, finally, I think there's some actual relief coming to some of those cases. So all that being said, those are just a little bit of the different areas that we're working on. And as I said, there's, it is essentially a little bit of everything, from every little segment or even big segment to things of the budget and all the way down to architects, right? So, you know, we are doing the best that we can and those are some of the issues that we'll be working on. I will make this last final plea to all of you. It is never too late to give me ideas or thoughts or suggestions. What I do, I try to email out and those of you who might receive them or I'll send it to the newspapers as well, I try to set up updates to say, well, here's what's coming up, right? If you have an opinion on it, tell us and we can try to address that opinion while we are discussing that particular piece of legislation. I'm gonna give you one really fast example, then I'll be quiet. A great example of this is last year, last session, with about two weeks to go in session, right, which is well past any time to introduce any legislation for anything, we had the ethanol plant that many of you know right across from Walmart, right? The ethanol plant came to me and says, look, we just realized we are being properly classified with our taxes, improperly classified. In other words, they were getting taxed too much and they didn't really know it, and then they finally brought it to our attention and they said, so because of this, we're experiencing significant shortages in revenue and everything else, and we've actually had to let off some, lay off some people and so how do we get this fixed? And we said, well, gosh, I wish you would've seen me four months ago, but that being said, I understand, sometimes things happen. So literally, one of the last bills of the year, we were able to get an amendment on that bill to help solve that particular problem. Now, that happens to be the only ethanol plant in the state and it's vital to certainly to our community and to the state. So we were able to correct it. And so my point is this, it's never too late to come with a problem and say, well, what about this or did you notice that or did you see that? But please, of course, do it as quickly as possible and if there is merit to it, we certainly wanna address it and do all that we can. I'm here, I work for you, I wanna try to represent the best that I can, so if there's a way that I can help, I just wanna as powerfully convey that as I can. So that being said, Mr. Mayor, council members, I will be happy to take any questions if I'm allowed to, I'm not sure of the format, but there's a little report of what we're working on and what we hope to accomplish and some of the things that we're looking to do. And I'll certainly make sure we give you an update at the end of the year as we normally do to let you know, well, what was our batting average? How well did we do? And I will end on one more thing, the TPT reform, the sales tax reform that we put through last year, we still think it's gonna be a very big benefit to the cities and towns. And so we're gonna try to work out any kinks in that bill this year cuz it takes effect next year. But the idea is, it's gonna be a very positive things for the cities and towns. And again, I wanna thank the mayor, the council members and Paul Jefferson specifically for helping that get through last year because we certainly needed your input on that. So, but that's it. So thank you for indulging me and I will, again, if there's questions, I'll gladly take them.
We have some questions by Councilwoman Gussi, at which point we'll go to Councilwoman Marvin Brown.
Thanks for coming. I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold, so I'm just gonna read off of this so I don't forget my notes. Thanks for coming again. We missed you the last time that Representative Quasman was here to speak on that TPT bill you were speaking about. You had mentioned that you missed the TPT bill, the vote on the TPT bill because of some personal issues with your wife's pregnancy and congratulations, by the way. Boy, girl? Girl, another girl. I know you have two at least.
I'll interrupt you, cuz that's three girls and a boy. My boy's outnumbered, but we have two male dogs, so I think, I'm just kidding.
Wait till the girls become teenagers, then talk to me. I was lucky enough to have my husband by my side at the birth of my three children. But as we all know, there are men that are not as lucky. Those are the ones that are deployed overseas that don't get to see the birth of their children because they're serving our country. And all those men who will never get to see their children because they die on the service for their country. And unfortunately, there are men that do return serving their country that commit suicide. They will never see their children grow up. There was a bill that came before you designed to give a break to all those servicemen and women who were returning to the states despite they were desperate in need of jobs to feed themselves and to feed those children. My question to you today is regarding the bill, House Bill 2484. Now, I have to admit, I don't follow every bill that comes before you. I just happened to read an article in this Arizona Veterans Magazine that was published and in the article it states that HB 2484 was to provide tax credits for employers for hiring veterans. This contains a list, this magazine here contains a list of companies that were hiring veterans and a section that points out 11 state representatives that voted no to help veterans, and your name, sir, was amongst those 11. And I have to add that Mr. Quasman was not named in this article. When I asked you to provide the reason as to why you voted no on this bill, and I quote, "This bill came down to the concept of picking winners and losers. I reject this winner and loser mentality as I believe government should be promoting policy that is equally applied to all citizens or industries the same." Now, I would like you to elaborate on your quote there, but before I do that, I want to mention one last thing. I have a picture here of state lawmaker, the first one in history to be recalled, and you appear in this picture, and that's Mr. Pierce. Mr. Russell Pierce was the loser in his run for senate in 2012. You stand beside Mr. Pierce here, but yet you claim to refuse to pick winners and losers when we're talking about our veterans. So I have to elaborate a little bit more. I spoke to Representative Mark Gardenas, who was an Arizona National Guardsman for eight years. He introduced this bill that I'm talking about and I just want an explanation as far as what you meant by picking winners and losers when it comes to a bill that was supposed to help our veterans.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, first, let me state this, I think my record on supporting the military is a very good one. That specific bill that you're referring to, I did write you back that response. And the notion of what I mean by winners and losers, this is gonna fall exactly into this whole jobs bill that I just spoke about. The state of Arizona has a policy that I agree with, which is, if you're gonna enact legislation, it ought to fit everybody. How many times do we see in Washington DC where congressmen pass laws and it doesn't affect them and it passes these people, but it doesn't write? No. If we're gonna have legislation, well, let's have it be equal and uniform. And those are some of the very ideals and how we actually help move Arizona from 48th in the nation to 4th in the nation in job growth. And what I mean by winners and losers is this, that's a segment or a subset of the population or an industry to say, you know what, we really like you better than everybody else, we're gonna give you a break, but we're not gonna give them a break. And a very good example of this is what's called the movie bill or the film credit bill. Whenever you talk about a credit, and this very thing was a credit, and what that means is when an employer is gonna hire somebody, they're gonna get money back or save money for doing it. Same thing in the film industry. So you might have heard of, well, what's the film credit bill? Well, that means if you come to Arizona and maybe shoot a movie, you get a bunch of money back. Well, I'm not so sure about that kind of policy. And what I mean by that is, nope, I don't care if you make microchips, I don't care if you sell movies, I don't care if you sell donuts. If Arizona's open for business, it ought to be open to business for everybody and it ought to offer the same leg up for everybody. And that's what I call winners and losers. So we don't wanna go in and say, hey, we really like your industry, here's a big perk package for you, but you know what, Mr. Industry over there, eh, we don't care about you as much till you get none of it. I don't think that's the proper rule of government to, again, go in and pick winners and losers. When it comes down to that specific bill, 2484 you're referring to, that bill was, well, picking winners and losers when it comes to tax credits. There's a few other problems in that bill though, that myself and many colleagues saw. Matter of fact, I don't even think that bill, if I remember correctly, got a hearing in the senate. I don't even think it moved in the senate because of these very concerns that people had. And those concerns are, well, it gave a three-day, you might have to correct me, it's been a long time since I've seen the bill, it gave a three-day advantage for job postings. So in other words, if you were a member of the military, you got that job posting three days before everybody else. And then if that employer hired you, then they would get a tax credit. Well, again, family goes back a long way in the military, but there's a lot of people on unemployment. on unemployment, there's a lot of people that need jobs. And so, the idea of, "Well, are we gonna take this class and do something completely separate when we're talking about credits and money?" When I talk about other issues about, "Well, we're not gonna make them do more training, we're not gonna make them go through additional things that they've already done, we want to ease some of those things for them," that's not a direct credit coming back to that business. But here's the biggest problem, and I'll stop on this, and I'll certainly take a follow-up. But the biggest problem that was part of that bill was, we were concerned for the employee of the company. So let's say Company A says, "Oh, I get a tax credit if I hire this guy." They would hire them, and then fire an existing worker that worked at the company. And now they brought in a new employee, so they can get a credit, but now Employee B over here gets fired, 'cause he only can hire three employees, or 10 employees, or whatever the case is. Well, that's not very fair to that person either. And matter of fact, I met, I sat down with the representative you mentioned, Representative Cardenas, about that very thing. He approached me this year and said, "I'm gonna do this bill again, how can I make a difference, so it actually will pass in the Senate?" And I said, "Well, why don't we do some things like this?" And those are some of the very recommendations he's taken account for the bill this year, to make it a cleaner bill, and a more uniform bill, that I think the entire legislature and the governor can get behind. Sorry for the long answer.
Thank you, I appreciate that, but I still don't see the difference between this bill that's going to... And as you mentioned, there are a lot of people that are unemployed, and a lot of people that need jobs, but there aren't a lot of people that are willing to sacrifice their life and serve this country. So when they're coming back, Mr. Cardenas introduced this bill because of a good friend of his who committed suicide. He couldn't find a job in the state of Arizona, and we have a lot of veterans returning that need that upper edge. And you mentioned the companies. I know for a fact, I have contacted AT&amp;T and Verizon Communications, they will not fire an individual to hire an individual, that is just not their practice. So this is something that they are doing, they're already promoting it, they are hiring veterans, because they know that this is a need, and there aren't too many veterans that are willing to sac... There aren't too many individuals in this country that are willing to sacrifice their life for this country. And I feel that this bill is going to be introduced before you. Mr. Cardenas had told me that he is introducing this before you again, and I really hope that you do vote yes on the next time around.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brown?
Representative Smith, thank you for your presentation. I have two questions for you. Number one, do you know whether or not ADWR has taken a position on the groundwater issue in Casa Grande, as far as the agriculture industry?
Was the question, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, was the question...
ADWR, have they taken a position on the groundwater situation?
They haven't seen the legislation that we're proposing, so I have not seen them taking a position on that, because I don't think they, or frankly, I don't think anybody's seen it.
All right, secondly, the Red Rock situation, who's paying the consultant?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, that's an agreement between the State Land Department and the Union Pacific.
So it's joint. All right, thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor Farrell?
Representative, thank you for coming this evening, we appreciate your presence. You mentioned the groundwater bill that you introduced to legislation. Back in August, I think it was August, maybe July, and this is just a curiosity question, I know that Representatives Pratt and Choop joined forces with Councilmember Dick Powell in Casa Grande, and formed a committee with the farmers in the area to go attack this problem. Where did you fit in in this process, and where are they in introducing this bill that you said you have introduced to legislator... Legislation, I'm sorry.
Sure. Mayor, councilmember, yeah, great question. So, I'm gonna give a 10-second background on what's going on. So, starting January of this year, this depreciation was starting. So if you own land, or, right, the clock was starting on you now. And so what Representatives Pratt and Choop helped accomplish was, well, they put a five-year delay on the problem. So at least the problem stopped, right? The clock isn't starting, it's just pushed on pause. Councilmember Dick Powell from Casa Grande, and I have worked for hours on this, he is highly supportive of what we're trying to do. And all we're trying to do, frankly, the nuts and bolts of it is, we're trying to repeal this bad decision that starts the clock ticking. We want to repeal it. What we have in place now is a five-year push/pause button. Well, again, that doesn't work for me, because here's why. If you're an industry, and if you want to set up a business in America, especially in Casa Grande, or anywhere in Pinal County, take, for example, in Casa Grande, the two new yogurt plants that are relying heavily, heavily on the water and the ag industry down there, are you sure you're gonna want to open up a business if you're not really sure what's gonna happen in five years? Because in five years, the clock could start ticking again, and then all these water rights are extinguished. So what we want to do, again, is throw away the clock. We want to make sure that there is no ticking clock, and if the new board wants a clock, well, they can vote one in. This is a direct request from some of those very board members you spoke about, so I'm not unilaterally acting. Matter of fact, the Rose Law Group, a big law group that came in to represent the agricultural community in this very litigation, approached me and helped with the language on the bill. So again, they're working directly for some of those members, and we want to make sure that, and this is their request to me, please make this go away, because if you push/pause for a few years, you've done nothing but create uncertainty. Nobody knows what might happen, and that doesn't foster a good business environment at all. So we want to just get rid of it, let those people know, "No, that grandfathered water rights, they are yours, and they will stay yours."
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions?
Representative Smith, thank you very much for coming today and giving us the legislative update. I would just like to not ask a question, but, you know, give my support behind the her funding. We'd appreciate your fighting for us on that, as we understand how important it is. And again, just so the public understands, I mean, that's the gas tax that you pay here in this city, and instead of it staying here to fix your roads, it's going somewhere else out of city. And I know that when you boil it down to that, people get that and they understand it, so we'd appreciate your help there. Also, as we approach the TPT fixes, I know that you and I chatted with Michael Hunter, who's the governor's number-one person on that, and so if you keep a close eye on that for us, we'd really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Rest assured, Mayor. Thank you again for having me, thank you, councilmembers, thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go on to item 10.2. The mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on appointing one citizen to fill the vacancy on the Heritage District Citizen Advisory Committee. I believe this appointment was done by you, Councilwoman Brown, and so I'd turn the time over to yourself.
Mr. Mayor, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I am very proud to present a candidate for that position this evening, who is well-known to citizens of Maricopa, as well as citizens of Pinal County. Her corporations have done a measurable, great work in not only the hazardous situations as far as waste, but also helping the environment. She's a great lady who was earlier spoke about, she provides the only service in Pinal County, and I am honored to submit the name of Gina Diabella as my candidate to serve on the Heritage History Committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. So the motion before us is by Councilmember Brown to submit Gina Diabella for the filling of the position of the Heritage District. There is a motion, Councilmember? There is a second, so is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Gina. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Thank you. At this time, item 10.3, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Maricopa, Arizona, designating the election date and purpose of election, designating the deadline for voter registration, and designating the place and the last date for candidates to file nomination papers. This is for discussion and action. Vanessa?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is the official call of the election for the 2014 season. We have designated August 26, 2014, as the date for holding the primary election in the city for the purpose of nominating for the office of mayor and councilmembers. As Councilmember Chapados earlier said, we have one seat open for mayor and three for councilmember. The voter registration deadline is 25 days before any given election. For the primary election, you must be registered by July 28, and the cutoff for the general election is October 6. Candidates seeking municipal office may obtain nomination papers and all other materials with me beginning tomorrow. Those nomination petitions and all the documentation is due at the earliest, April 28 of 2014, and at the latest, May 28, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. So if you have any questions?
Great. Counsel, questions?
To approve.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And last but not least, item 10.4. The mayor and city council shall discuss and possibly take action on offering a three-year employment agreement to Mr. Gregory Rose to serve the city of Maricopa as its city manager. This item is for discussion and action. Yes, Councilwoman Chapados?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, there's been a lot of discussion on this item, and I just want to offer a perspective that maybe a lot of you are not aware of. We went through what I consider to be a very arduous, lengthy process. Myself and my fellow councilmembers spent over 24 hours in two days, a couple weeks ago, just going through interviews and talking to people, and deliberating amongst ourselves. We involved a number of different people, including community stakeholders. Our directors got a voice in this process. I have to say that I'm a little bit disappointed in what I consider at this point to be taking a position without all your information, without all your facts. The seven of us are sitting here because we represent your voices. We're not gonna take anything under consideration, especially something this important, without doing our homework. We did our research. You know, the media, anybody with a computer can Google these names of these candidates and find things if they're looking for things. I can tell you, from my own personal perspective, we had three candidates that were very qualified. And it was not an easy decision for me, it took a lot of time, a lot of deliberation, a lot of homework outside of council, just reading materials that were provided to us, doing our own research. The mayor and the vice mayor also did some independent research at the direction of council. And we came to a decision that is the agenda item tonight, but part of that process involves us doing homework on your behalf. I can guarantee you that none of us took this decision lightly. We all realize the importance of it. And while I have this opportunity, I want to thank Tricia Sorensen. She has been the consummate professional throughout this procedure. She has come on board, hit the ground running, done a great job, you know, stepped up to the plate, everything we threw at her, she just took with, "Okay, been there, done that, what do you guys think we should do? Let's move on, and let's keep the wheels rolling." Never skipped a beat. So thank you, Tricia, for your service in these seven months. But I gotta tell you, there's things that happen that, as councilmembers, we have a lot more information than perhaps the media has access to, and the general public has access to. I think we're doing ourselves, our current staff, and Mr. Rose a disservice by making a position and making judgments without the man even starting here yet. Give him a chance. I know, I guarantee you that I will be one of seven councilmembers watching him closely. Now, he has a three-year contract that we're about to vote on. I'm here a lot. I work with staff, I do my homework, I ask hard questions. I'm gonna be looking out for the best interest of Maricopa, but I am going to do my part to make sure that Mr. Rose succeeds in that job, and I hope that the citizens of Maricopa will extend him that same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Chapados. Anyone else like to say anything before we move to a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Chapados, and explaining to the public, those who sent negative emails to all of us, that we did thorough research on Mr. Rose, and to jump to conclusions can be very dangerous and very hateful. But nevertheless, we did, we're very prudent of what we did. I'd like to also thank Trish for her great work that she did as Antrim City Manager. I offer now the name of Gregory Rose to be our next city manager, city of Maricopa.
A second.
So there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the item?
I would just like to echo as well, from a discussion standpoint, that, you know, the vice mayor and I also went to the city of North Las Vegas, and took some time to investigate both referrals, as well as those who both liked him and disliked him. And I think we got a good view, and we came back and reported that to the city council. And we got a good estimation as to who the man is, and, you know, his well-roundedness. Now, at the end of the day, it's like anybody, you can put somebody in position, and you'll never know how they perform until you get six months down the road, or three months down the road. And one of the things, if you read his contract, that was in the pamphlet here, attached to the agenda, is that he actually asked for a six-month review from council, so not a year, a six months. And he wants to be reviewed to see if he's doing his job. And I found that to be very refreshing and enlightening. And that's a good thing. It gives us a chance to review and to see if he's doing what he's supposed to. And so to that end, you know, counsel, I can't tell you things that were said in each session, but I can tell you that the vetting process and the things that the public said, the emails we received, the feedback that we got, the individual due diligence and research from every positive and negative aspect on each one of these candidates was so thoroughly vetted and thrown around inside this e-session, it was pretty exhausting. I think my councilmembers can echo me on that. We really did our best to go through every single candidate in every situation and possibility. And so to that end, there is a motion on the floor, and with that, Vice Mayor Farrell has something to say as well.
One quick comment. First of all, Councilmember Chapados, that was very, very well said. I couldn't have said it any better. Thank you for making your comments on that. And I gotta just echo all of her comments, and this was my personal third national search for a city manager. And I can tell you, sitting on this council for 10 years, I can't recall a more stressful 24 hours. We, I mean, you can take my word when I tell you these seven people up here did the due diligence that was necessary in this city manager search, and I can tell you, out of all three searches, the reason I think it was so stressful, well, not think, the reason I know it was so stressful, is because we had three very qualified finalists, and any of them would have done a tremendous job for the city of Maricopa, I'm very confident in that. And that's something that the city of Maricopa should be proud of, because I can tell you, in the two previous searches, it wasn't half as stressful as this. It didn't, people didn't rise to the cream like these three did. And I just want to, again, take an opportunity to thank Tricia. Tricia, you've done an outstanding job, you've over exceeded yourself, and we really appreciate all your service you've done to the city. And with that, Mayor, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Councilman Potter? And then, Councilman Potter? This is my fault, I apologize. Mr. Henry Wade submitted a speaker card, and I forgot to acknowledge that, I apologize. You'll be asked to come up, Mr. Wade, right after Councilman Potter speaks.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is my first time through vice, very, you've done it three times, and you said it was very strenuous, and I have to admit that weighing this decision, taking the feedback from the public and staff, and, you know, everyone's input was very important, very important to me. And I'm not sure if city council could have done any more vetting with these candidates, as well as the public. And there was continuous email, even over the weekend, and I followed up on articles that were online from a few years ago. And, you know, I wanted to, and it was good advice I was told today, was go ahead and just vote my conscience on this one, because I gotta tell you, all the candidates were good, and I had a very good impression of Mr. Rose, and I, but honestly, I wanted to have, or want to have, ideally would like to have, a clean slate of anyone coming into a position. But I'm not sure how that could be done realistically, given the position of a city manager, and being in a position for six years in a city that was, you know, up and coming and growing, and going through their times in the recession of 2008 and 2009, if anyone can manage without any, to be scathed at all, given the times of that period, anybody in that position. So I don't know if it was the person or the situation. So with that, and to be fair, I also want to thank the public for their input, and also thank the vetting of... also thank the vetting of council individually. And, you know, all the way I took to right now, actually, to decide how I was going to vote. So, but either way, I would like the public and staff, whoever the city manager happens to be that we give the permanent title to, welcome them with open arms and give them the support because that's, you know, we're all human up here and we all do the best that we can. And whoever takes that position is well as human, and we don't necessarily want to look backwards. We want to learn from our mistakes and our errors in a period of prior time, but apply it in a positive way going forward because our city of Maricopa does deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Well, there is a motion on the floor. Mr. Wade, you were okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. To that end, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for being here today, and thank you, city council and the public for everything you've done and have continued to do for us, and we look forward to inviting Mr. Rose here with open arms. And again, we thank Tricia very much for all of our hard work. And to that end, let's give her a big round of applause. Thank you again for being here. Let's stand adjourned, but motion to each session, please.
A motion.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.